I'm gonna be ready.
I'll slow down. I jumped up. That's six o'clock. Okay, let's all stand up. I guess they approved the agenda. Very emotional. Sorry.
I know.
Say again. All in favor? Aye. Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own right and its own right to live, free, and fair. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own right and its own right to live, free, and fair. Anyway, have a public comment. Make a public comment. Now would be a good time to do that. Hey. You got one public comment?
Yeah, go ahead. My name is Grant Carey. I'm Senior Project Manager with Summit Carbon Solutions. I'm one of two that'll be responsible essentially for everything that's going on project here in the state. Just wanted to let you know that we are available if you do have any questions during the meeting this evening, then remain after if you have any that you'd like to address them as well. Thanks.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Mayo? If there's no one else, we'll go to JD.
Good evening. JD brings Page Sky Engineering. Fine day in Page County today. Friends here. Hopefully we don't go directly into Summit. We'll see. I sent you in here a week out Monday evening for the week. We're all for the week since we were meeting on Thursday. The blades are out. We finally got started on the edge road north of town here on M70. Rock Hall continued on Tuesday. We sent five men to the exploration safety class in the corner. That's a trench safety. I grew up working in the trench with my father and grandfather. The spray catcher has worked up. We ordered oil for this morning. And when the truck out here, it pumped and didn't work. So we'll try again tomorrow morning for our large storage tank. In the shop, we've ordered and found an ejector pump and not been capped for number seven. We're stripping some of the motorators and trucks of their winter equipment. Let's talk more about the tank. The bridge construction continues on both sides. The riprap underneath the beams is placed at the 280th street. And they're working on riprap on the Essex Bridge. Current schedule has been set in Beams starting the middle of next week on 280th Street. Beams for Essex are later in the month. Have an agenda item for the fiscal year 24 DOT budget and program. We get that to view court. Continue project development on P34 when those had the five year program. We've been looking for engineer tech since October of 22. A pound one. I'm gonna start next Monday. And there's an agenda item for that also. Next week in Alabama is the National Association of Cabin Engineers meeting. I will not attend that. I asked the board when the next meeting is adjacent state, could I be, could I can go to that with this and not adjacent state? Questions for the engineer?
Does your tech have experience?
He has some schooling and can he does not be, does not have experience with engineer tech stuff, except for the computer side.
On your edge road, did you get the thing for the truck to come in?
No.
Do that in your car?
We're, we're. We have a disc on the front. We have a disc on the front of the motorator and it's falling off of the motor behind it.
Just to work the gravel back on?
Work to work the gravel into the edge and then back off there. So that, that device is still several months away.
So you're gonna run J64?
Right now, we're running M70 and JC before it's on. The, the next agenda item with the engineers, request inclusion of the July raise for the new engineer tech. Board has policy that people hire after the first April or not eligible for raising June unless the board sanctions.
So what's that gonna be? What were the salary being?
Right now, the starting is 26 dollars a mile.
So you want the 3.85 on top of that?
Yes. I mean, this is, we're, we're 17 days in March, you know? If I was down in sooner, I would hire him sooner. But we didn't. Not what it works, but it's not the same scenario as I understand the situation with the cost of this policy about. So I have a request that we can bring him on.
I started my gravel machine shop. I was kinda, I just pulled here for, I had to meet our engineer to do something.
Yeah, we've lost.
I'm hard to.
We've lost our engineer tech that has been here for a year, almost a year, but it's only way didn't pull.
It doesn't sound like he has a lot of experience except for the computer side. Is what you said, right?
Correct. That's correct. So.
Are we trying?
Is there some kind of progression? We're training and we have a plan and trains. Now, there'll be, by the time you get, by the time you fly, we'll, you know, they'll have two schools that he has to have. And, you know, he'll be out with the, on the bridge projects. We'll start on Tuesday.
So that'd be $27 a mile, right?
That's what I was, 3.5, yes.
Nice.
27. I wonder if we should maybe conditionally hold up, hold off for six months?
Okay, thanks.
See how he's doing?
Yeah. Is that possible?
Here, this is six months probation and that's good. He's doing good. He's feeling kind of have some.
We're interested so that we can do the July raise, six month part.
As long as he's.
As long as he's progressing.
Okay. Follow him up though.
No.
That's not getting there.
So go from, go on. Right? October, October 17.
The, the District Four average for engineer tech, of course, I, I don't know about experience level of this. But the District Four average, which is southwest quarter of, of the state, engineer tech average is 29, 69 cents an hour.
But if he's coming in with no experience?
Right, so he's.
I think that's a pretty good starting point right there.
Okay. Do that, that watch me.
Okay, you want the budget against?
Okay, okay.
I'm good with the.
Or are you gonna, you know, do we have an understanding?
I think the six months is too good probational. Since he has no experience, we have no experience to do one.
Right.
Do one probably.
Okay. I didn't know if you were gonna make a motion to have.
We can.
I can make a motion that no raise until October the 17th, six months probation time.
Conditional.
Conditional on whether he's learning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second to that. Okay, our motion second on that. I mean, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. During the DOT budget and program, let's deal with the budget first. This is the DOT's form of the budget. It reflects the county budget exactly. It's separated into four control groups. But the, the dollars are the things. Those signatures on the first, second page, excuse me, revenues on the second page, expenses on the third page. And, and that did reflect. My current year, FY23 reflects the amendments that I sent into the hall of care on Tuesday. So it's, you know, we cut back on the new equipment and move to FY24. It's the same type, different form.
Period is showing us you shifted the money.
Yes.
You shifted that money basically to $5,000 forward a year.
For $300,000. You know, from current budget for FY23. We ran it over $600,000. We cut 300 and moved to fiscal year 24.
The new equipment's now. Yeah, instead of spending it this year, you're putting.
Right, oh, you couldn't, you can't spend it if you're getting equipment.
Get faster than.
Okay.
And there's still money for predators with all.
Yeah. Okay. What do you need on that?
Is approval? Once again, same numbers.
Just shift it on your.
Right, well, we, we shifted money in the county budget. It's the same number to the county budget, just different format.
Right. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
For a second, I wrote budget sheet. Okay, motion to approve that?
Second.
Yep. Any discussion on that? Okay, understand what it is. Okay, here, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. Now, current of the program. There's a map and a tabulation. Both tabulations has the details of the project, the estimated cost in year. And the map. We needed a workbook, so I'll talk for the, talk for that. Well, if you can make clear out of your map in front of, this is the map. This is the same map as I furnished a couple of years ago. Excuse me, a couple of weeks ago with the draft stamp on it, except I've changed the year. On, on a covert project, pushed it out two years to FY28, this is from 24. This is year 24 to this year, 28, five year program. I'll, I'll stop it. I'll start, we'll go through the projects. At the, starting at 12 o'clock and 12 o'clock ways around the county. So it won't be in chronological order. So we'll talk about that when we look at it. I added, I added no projects last year for, we just spread it out a little bit. That's, that's the function of funding. So at the, the top of the map in 2026, there's a bridge on a curve on the mining road. It's a. It's a narrow bridge, three beams. On, on the. And if the state's thinking, this is a federal aid route, we can federalize money for this project. The next project in, in the current, we in fiscal year 2024, the 190th Street Bridge over Mill Tarkill. That's a bridge east of Andy, welding shop on the west. You know, winery place on the pond road. We anticipate letting it with things still properly and we'd let it in the fall and build over the next winter. The next projects are a couple of bridges in North Town. Where we're gonna take two bridges out and put one bridge back and build several thousand feet of roadway with the cheaper than bridge and still maintain connectivity with the roads. Also in that year, the next project has J50, J53 based stabilization in Seacoat. It's one, one project instead of broken into two. The far southeast corner of the county on J55. We also added, added a mile or half a mile on T Avenue that connects up what we have done already with quarry. We can do that now because T Avenue was reclassified as a farming market road a couple of years ago and then, and we plan to do that in 2025. Board asked me to make sure that we couldn't do it sooner than that. And you can't, we don't have the funds. We borrowed ahead on farming market accounts. There's part of the reasons for that. In fiscal year 22, we did five and a half miles of base stabilization in Otis Field on the North Road, Road and the Road to the Quarry on J55. That was about a million and a half dollars. We also did a half million dollars worth of Seacoat work and these were both FM projects. That was last year. Last construction season. This year, we intend to get a change road. It will be let in June. It doesn't reflect on this construction program because it's let in fiscal year 23. We'll build it in fiscal year 24, you know, this fall, this summer, this fall. On day road, estimated about 1.9 million. We, our farming market count is funded about a million dollars a year.
So how far into it are we right now?
We're, you know, two and a half, two and a half, 2.3 years well ahead, three is the max.
Oh, we're doing a little further.
Moving, continue to move around the box. The next project is in the southwest corner on Ski Avenue, also M32. A bridge over the West Tarkill, the bridge on curve, once again, an older three beam bridge, narrow. We're, we're getting the bridges on, on, over the major rivers. Where there's, and down in this area, there is a good network of bridges, but this is on our, our farming market route there.
That's different money than the road money, right?
Correct. That's bridge money we get.
The, not the same thought.
Correct. We can draw bridge money out of the river pool. The next project is a covert on the same road north. On the Sea Avenue covert. Figured for the, the last year in the program 2028. And then also in the same year on F Avenue. Just south of 230th Street, near, near where that we built in 2020 is another covert. So we put the two coves in the same year. Hopefully we can get some time together and we go volume discount through contractor. The final project on the five year plan is in fiscal year 2025. The Essex North Bridge. This is contingent, of course, on receiving the raise grant that was turned in, in February. We're supposed to find out the, where the grants will be awarded to the Iowa counties in June, but there's no, there's no confidence in that schedule. That the federal highway will announce like they're supposed to. And, and then they tell us it'll take a year to work on a funding agreement, but I don't understand why it takes a year to put a funding agreement together for a bridge. We do this all the time. We have a schedule, we have a schedule for the Essex North Bridge funded by raise ban to be let in the fall of 24 in fiscal year 25. So that's why it's in fiscal year 25 and then we built that. Over the winter like we are the Essex West Bridge right now. And that's all the progress we have in this program. Well, there's, there's farming market rock haul this year. We didn't do it last year. These were the three.
And the rock haul comes out different?
Well, the rock haul is a farming market.
Same million dollars, isn't it?
Yes.
A hundred and dollars a rock haul?
Half a million.
What's about that?
We don't do it every year.
So the, the per mile to do the base stabilization, what do you say that was, 300,000, 1,000?
Correct.
Pretty something. So.
350.
The max when we could do in a year, a million dollars, that's about three miles.
If we did it every year, right.
Is there anyone else getting money for the, the rock, farming market money? Anyone else done for me? Or that's it? All right. Cause these years, I've seen this maps for the last couple of years I've been on here, and the same roads just get kicked. It's always another couple of years. This map was different six months ago. And that's just the money. They're different cost per mile is going up.
Right. Back in 2017, we did this for 160 thousand.
Half to half price.
Right, so, you know, we had a, we had a better, you know, that's a big difference.
I know.
But yeah, you know, gas tax is what it is and, and property tax, where it is also. We're, we're confronted.
Well, you guys got any thoughts on the map?
I guess it is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is there any other avenue to grants that lady of the earth and nun's office or any other kind of thing for road?
There's, there's safety money out there.
That Rockberry deal is a serious safety issue. Dust out of the terminal. I wonder if that would ever apply to help us with some money there.
I could find out. The, the safety money that people are spending are on their wife and shoulders. They put an asphalt on their shoulders. To make it, you know, more broke.
Can we get a credit and slide that over? Put in the. I'll offer something, some way that. They're both very busy, but there's an unbelievable amount of traffic. And. Very dangerous. It does come out. You can't see anything for miles. Outside of the cost per mile going up more in next year, what else could change this map?
We decided.
Well, I mean, we're not, we're committed to fixing what was ground up. I don't think we can. I don't, I mean, this, this might.
I don't think, I mean, I could put more project in.
Yeah, but I'm like, so. Yeah, we have to stick with what we told, what we told the county to ground up, get that in the back. But there's nothing else to slide that forward other than.
No.
Increases per mile cost. Right.
Right. That's what, that's what I heard on the scale.
I don't like how far out it is, but not much to do about it.
I think everybody's probably chasing the same things we are.
Okay. Anyone else on that? We're all clear.
Do we need a motion on that?
Um, yeah. Accept that plan.
I make a motion to accept the five year plan.
I'll second it.
I got a motion of second. Anybody discussed it? Here now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Right, I bet all done. Next up, the agenda is discuss and actually changes on Page County windows. Just talking about every topics on there, maybe starts discussion. So. Several big things there. We gotta go to this hatch out. What do you think if we go forward and find some way to adjust this thing? The best bit? In county? Any thoughts?
So, um, well, my idea would be to break it up into bag and raise of, um, how we wanted to look at the ordinance and try to revamp certain sections or ideas on it. Um, basically saying, okay, so we're gonna have maybe dedicate one of being the setbacks and lighting, maybe you mix those two together or, you know, we, we do one on, on height description, do a sound and decimal. Um, and just have a, a different section that we kind of highlight and go through. Um, and you could word that onto the, uh, agenda that way and everybody can do the research. People could come, talk to the, at the meetings about those certain topics. We can write in the language or kind of fill in the language or however you want to set it up um, with those ideas. And then, you know, we can go back and do the, the terminology and the structure of the ordinance. But we need to nail down those ideas of what we want to see in it or what we want to adjust.
Right. What big ones? Your, your big thing, what's that back?
Yeah. Yep. And, uh, cause then I think we're not gonna get overwhelmed with the whole thing and be bouncing all over and not get anywhere.
Like I want a ten hour meeting either.
Right, right. And, and you know, and then come out with nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if you're, you know, pinpoint the things that we wanna, you know, bring up or we think are important in the ordinance that we'd like to change, like setbacks or.
Allow back a little over kind of all the issues in there. We're gonna talk about all these things, but the biggest ones. You know, we can talk about, we've all went to the end, it's fine, but I'm, I'm curious. That's a good place to start having discussions. Just to start the discussion, we've got more discussion about, um, setback based on safety and liability for somebody who is a nonpartisan.
Yeah.
What's our opinions on that? Any opinions on that? I mean, I have a bunch. I've spent years thinking about this, but. And, and how, what's our opinion on that?
You thought, Steve?
I don't right now. I'm not gonna stake out.
Okay. But I just would like to see, I think so what I was trying to do when I was sending out stuff to the agenda was, you know, hey, let's figure out a, a, a plan of topics that we want to have on the agenda that we can be specific. And we can present that to the public on the agenda or they can, they can plan accordingly. And say, you know, if, for example, so, you know, if we say next Sunday or next, next Thursday, we, hey, on, on the agenda is going to be, we're ready to discuss and maybe finalize ideas of setbacks, what we'd like to see in the ordinance. Um, that way the public has a, has a, you know, a week of maybe looking at ideas or, and we have a week to look at ideas and be prepared and come in with things that we've found maybe in other counties or other ordinances. And then we can have this discussion at that point on the meeting and say, you know, here's, here's the public's idea. The public will have input. We'll have input. We can kind of discuss and then finalize, hey, this is what we're gonna put in our ordinance and put that to bed. And then the next thing you should work on lighting and maybe size or, you know, whatever you want to go to the next category.
You wanna do that on the topic you wanna do next week? Just pick a couple. You wanna do height and setback? Cause setback and height are together. How tall something is and how far away it is.
Yeah. So we do height and setback. And do that first.
Radar lighting is.
I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think the, the, yeah, lighting, there's not gonna be a lot you're gonna be able to do, but we do have some ideas of, of how we want to address, address that. But, you know, I think, you know, the main thing has always been setbacks and where we stand with that and what we decide to, to do and how that impacts the non participating landowner. So I think, you know, that's going to be a big, a big issue that we need to, to solve and, and kind of right the ship, so to speak. So um, I'm fine with that one, you know, starting off and then go from there.
I didn't expect to see if this was right or not. If this was on Facebook, did you?
I've seen it before, yeah.
Have you seen it before? Okay. Okay. I hadn't seen it before.
Yeah. Comparison heights.
Right.
A lot of counties do a height limit.
Yeah.
You know, in our, I think including this right in our safety or zoning ordinance, in a way that I look back, it's been a while since I looked at it. I think you have to have a, uh, uh, adjustment, I have to go to the board of adjustment. It's over three stories, I think, so with the way it is for commercial or industrial things right now, which is different than our window. So height and then taller something is more liability it has. So just discussing all those things. Yeah, I have good ideas. Weeks just keep flying. So you want to just start, that's the biggest ticket issue with our working that out, let's say, to protect people.
So basically what we're doing is we're skipping the definitions for right now.
For now.
And the permit applications. The requirements and moving on.
Give them the big, the big, uh, things that are the discussion from, more discussion.
Right.
So we can do that. Everybody take a minute and research that and have a plan with the things.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to see us as a board have some ideas when we come back. I know you've done research and I've done some research and had things sent to me and things that I want to look over, but I think then the public also has an opportunity to plan and, and come and, and if it's something that they're very passionate about, like maybe they're passionate about the setback piece. That's a perfect time, you know, to come and be able to share ideas or bring something that they can share with the board.
Right.
Um, I think it's just, it, it breaks it up a little bit. So we're not overwhelmed with everything and trying to.
Whatever template we go with, we know what is inserted in these couple of spots, cause you have to.
Right. And then, you know, I think later on, then as we get the ordinance kind of shaped the way we want it, then we start, you know, you kind of start doing your public hearings and you're going over the whole body of.
The hearing has to be after we've got it nailed down. Then you have a hearing.
Right.
And then, then you can adjust it if you have a problem. You've got to have a pretty much the whole nutshell.
Right.
There, yeah, that's a good idea. So so we don't want to talk many nights about it. So just wait another week and we can pick a topic. We'll do setbacks and height. Anything else?
Throw light.
It's true. The, the lighting, as we talked about the lighting on top, the, uh,
Yeah. So.
Aircraft protection lighting.
So I think the, the ADLS system and the, you know, and maybe, uh, then the noise or the decibel levels and things like that, safety wise, those kinds of things could all be lumped into another night or, you know, you know, sometime when we could. Because I think, you know, we're gonna have lots of ideas on setbacks and there's a lot to, to fine tune there versus, you know, uh, a living or dwelling with residents versus a, you know, maybe one that's not occupied.
What was that in that, in that line?
I mean, there's all kinds of things that's gonna be brought up that we have to discuss.
Right. Uh, in the, that's like our ordinance has a, we talked about that a while back, dwelling and all that. You don't want to sign your car note. I don't believe it matters if it's dwelling on it or not. You might be building well.
Right. No, yeah, no. And that's, that's one thing we just need to throw up. And so, you know, maybe next week we say, okay, in our ordinance as it stands, this is what we have. We, we'll read that and we'll talk that and say, okay, yeah, how do we want to adjust that? What's the ideas?
Okay. So then, so let's just get that going. Let's ready for next week. So heights and setbacks, basically those are the two big things, height and setbacks. Okay. We can do that surely. Get that on there and study for a week. And anybody else, be welcome to study and come in, whatever. Good information.
How do you guys know about that? I mean.
I think it's good to take a piece at a time.
Okay.
Instead of trying to handle it all at once.
You know.
Yeah.
Yep.
Be overwhelming.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's, was that all? When you talked about that, just we've got a plan?
Yeah. So I would just to be, be clear. So next week, we will have on the agenda, we're ready to review third ordinance as far as setbacks and height.
No.
Okay.
Something to do with height is interesting is the, you know, the, how close the tip of the blade can be to the ground also. That's part of, not just overall height, that's how far it's not. I was reading lots of orders and they put a, um, a limit on how close the thing gets to the ground. There's something interesting, I think. Okay. Well, that's, that sounds good to me. So we're all good with that? We give, is that a good item or? Okay. The next, next item here is, uh, retaining areas of community. Tim Whipple is doing that. Attorney for the, the road, the ordinance for, uh,
Shelby.
Shelby County, we go there, there, uh, pardon my. And I reached out to some Shelby County supervisors, talked to them a little bit about the situation. Seemed like the, uh, wisest way to do this. And I talked to Carl about, asked him to put together the order to go on it. He was too happy. He wasn't gonna do this to you, Whipple, just to look at our comprehensive plan. We have a comprehensive plan. That's part of the core zoning. And see how it matches up with the ordinance. And just, we just need a little bit of time to have a look at, see how that pairs up if we want to go forward with something. It has to basically, your comprehensive plan has to the wording bits got to mesh with the, what the ordinance says. That needs to have an attorney looking at that.
How long has it been since we did the comprehensive plan?
I don't know. I'm guessing ten years. It's been a while. I think he said there was ninety eight. We'll spend even longer than them. So in, in those counties. So need to look at that and just see. So we can't really do anything until we have an attorney look at and see what actually applies if we want to do that. So we just need to, uh, agree that I remember do a little bit of looking at that for us.
We'll go.
To check out our comprehensive plan with the model ordinance that Shelby County has done. And see how they match together and tell us what they think. If we want to go forward with the ordinance. That's, that's why I put that on there. Just, I think that'd be the proper way to do it.
Like, you want a motion to?
I guess we need a motion to retain them for that purpose.
Okay. I would make a motion to retain English security to review our comprehensive plan. That correct?
I think so. Good. And well, yeah.
Well, and.
Potential carbon.
Potential carbon, part of the margins.
Yeah.
As it, as it relates to the.
Basically just your motion is the agenda item.
Yeah.
I think that's your motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and second. Any other discussion on that? The hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'll maybe have Carl reach out. I can be the best person to take care of that. Well, that's gotta stand to the end here about more communication if we have any, what's going on.
So was Tim Whipple at others in the thing?
Yes, he's the one that wrote that. So I figured he'd be the appropriate guy.
Yes. I haven't had any meetings this week, so.
I haven't either.
I did send actual, more detailed numbers. Actually got the detailed sheet of what to bid on. I got that sent to another outfit to bid, waiting on the bid now in the boiler. So it's actually went out, but all kept sending me not quite enough. I needed more. Now I have enough there.
So where did you send it?
Uh, Camden Mechanics, who takes care of, I think the school and the hospital.
And you didn't send it back to Siemens?
Siemens has it too. No, they're good. They have their bid.
Okay.
So, and I didn't send the numbers to the two of them. You know, they don't.
Okay.
So they got just.
So we'll get bids on those.
There'll be two bids.
Okay.
Um, there's a third person tried to reach out to them, got back. So there's at least two bids there. But that's in the works. Uh, landfill had that meeting last week. Went well. Landfill's going good. Had the council blocks of London to juvenile detention meeting. I don't have to give my person. Or the meeting up there. That's all I have, I think.
So you did go to it or you?
Oh, I'm going, sorry. Go on, it's Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Next Wednesday.
I don't think I have any. I don't, I haven't.
I don't think I have anything until we are, or help me next morning.
Yeah. Oh, I have a Wabasi meeting. Someone. Yeah, excellent. And next Tuesday, I guess. No, we, we, we're just, to talk about budget.
Budget time.
Yeah, they're trying to work out some things because of everybody. Them being coached, having their people hired.
I know.
So, yeah.
Hey, gentlemen. Okay. Anything else? I think what else is going on over here? Hmm. Is the window project marching on? I'm not really asked about that for a while. The window project, is it?
I don't know.
I just thought about that.
I guess we should ask that window.
Yeah, that's the right. You checked on it well.
I'll reach out to Melissa and ask her.
Good. So next Thursday evening, we'll come back and talk about.
I have had a lot of people ask me about the jail, um, being on, uh, the ballot in November. So I think we, and I did talk to Gary McFarlane the other day also. Right in the city of Florida. So whenever we discuss that. Um.
With a lot of things to.
Well, the city, the city of Florida has two million dollars to put on the table.
Mm-hmm.
And it would more than pay for a section of building that would take care of that. Um, and I think we need to be looking ahead maybe. You know, I don't know how soon it'll hit, but at some point in the next years, we may be looking at unified law enforcement. So you know, I think it's something that we need to consider.
I was showing, to make clear, there's no interest in that, I think. Unless it's for, I don't know if they can be forced.
Well, I, yeah.
Either they're happy.
I think it's getting harder and harder though for them to hire and keep, um,
Just need to work, find something that works for everybody.
Yeah. So anyway. Yep.
Okay. Well, jail, window, unit, we got her. So anything we'll put on next week? This year, but we'll be talking about the wind setbacks next week.
So did you put a, an end date for the bids on the boiler?
I did not. He said get back to me soon. So I won't assume names. I didn't put any date. I bet it'll be this week. I think. I told him also, we want to come look to make sure that the new maintenance guys there go down and look at it. And I can run up to and walk around with them, look at them and they can get it put together. So and get a good, an accurate feel of what they're doing. Okay. Anything else? If we've got all of that done, we just need to adjourn.
Proven minutes.
Oh, maybe proven minutes, you're right. Go over those at home.
I looked through them. They're fine. I didn't see, I didn't see the issues.
No, I think they're fine.
Want to make a motion? We'll be approving this.
I'll second that.
We're gonna motion a second, all over favor.
Aye.
Aye. There, good enough. Now, if you're ready.
Yes.
Yes.
Adjourn, I'll try to adjourn. I can come.